This conference will now be recorded.
By the way, okay. Here.
Those who'd care to join us will have a vote for the Fledge of Allegiance. Very pleased.
Let's pray. Our Father, we thank you so much for the opportunity to serve you. We thank you for the opportunity to gather together in a country that had freedom to do so. I pray that you'd bless this body, this commission as they assemble, bless each one of them, their families, the things they represent. I pray that you give them wisdom. We pray also, Lord, for our city workers, friends, you bless all of them, keep them safe, keep our first responders safe. We thank you for the work that they do. And as always, we thank you for the citizens of this community. I pray that you would just bless each one of them and their endeavors. We rejoice with them when they rejoice, and we just pray that you'd help us to meet their needs when they have needs to be met. We pray these things in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Adictions or depletions?
Yes, Mayor, we would like to add addition to the consent agenda, item number two, to approve a new cereal malt beverage license for Ninja Sushi Steakhouse located at 1618 North Summit Street.
Motion.
We accept the agenda as amended.
Second.
And maybe in second, we accept the agenda as amended. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Approval of the consent agenda?
I make a motion, we approve the agenda with the addition as stated above.
I'll second that.
It's been moved that we approve the agenda as amended. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. And since there are so many here tonight, and I know several of you are wanting to speak, we're going to ask that you come forward and give your name, so the people who are watching on video will be able to know who you are and what you're discussing. We would appreciate that very much. New business?
Consent agenda. Okay.
I approve that consent agenda.
Oh. Consent agenda? Just do it.
I approve the consent agenda with, oh, go. Were you going to say something first? Nope. I approve the consent agenda with that addition. I'll second that.
We approve the consent agenda as amended. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close.
Madam Mayor, for me, for clarification, you are still referencing for folks who are wanting to speak on items not on the agenda?
Or items that are on the agenda.
Or items that are.
And all, yes, for both.
Okay, but they will be allowed during that agenda?
Yes, so.
All right, thank you. Thank you.
City manager department, item number one is a resolution making certain findings and determinations as the need for housing, as to the need for housing within the city of our Kansas City, Kansas, and setting forth the legal description of real property proposed to be designated as a reinvestment housing incentive district within the city of our, within the city.
So this is a first step that we would take on any type of property to develop a, what they now call a reinvestment, reinvestment housing incentive district. I'm going to have troubles getting that one off my tongue because it's real housing incentive district. So the first steps are is that we obviously have done a housing study, and we know we need housing here badly. So we have the study. We, then we pass a resolution on a particular piece of property stating that we would like to enter that into the reinvestment housing incentive district program. This gets sent to the Secretary of State along with the housing study, and if they approve it, then that piece of property is eligible for that tool for a developer to develop with. What it amounts to is when we, by setting this, by setting this in motion, we capture the current value of the property on the tax roll. So right now, it's an empty piece of property, doesn't have a lot of value, so we, the, once this is approved by the Secretary of State, then that, that property tax value is set in stone. And then whenever the developer develops that property, the incremental increase, so any improvements made to the property, then can be rebated back to offset developmental costs. And there are certain things that are allowed. You know, it's infrastructure and things of that nature on a greenfield type of a development. So that's really what this is about, is it's getting that, this particular property that's in sleeve, the old eight, about eight acres that used to be the ball diamonds down there, certified as a real reinvestment housing incentive district. And then if it's developed further, then they could, then they can use that tool and develop a project on it.
Yeah, someone would like to speak on this? First?
Matthews, 900 North D Street. That area, resolution. Resolution about housing. I can sit on my front porch and for the past two years count eight empty houses. Nobody's working on, they're just sitting there. How can we say we need more housing? We've got a housing out of our city that's not even being, not even being worked on. That's, if we build another set of housing, that's gonna have a bunch of empty houses sitting around. That's all.
Thank you, sir.
My name's Jerry Straley. I'm a citizen and a city and a taxpayer also. If this is about giving away the free land, I'm against it. Like this man just said, this gentleman, we've got enough empty houses in this town. We've got more houses empty in this town than we do businesses downtown, and that's pretty bad. You guys asked us as citizens a month ago at a town hall to raise our taxes a half cent. And now you want to give away free land? Give me an acre. I'll stake it out, I'll put a lemonade stand on it. I live here. That's taxpayer dollars, that 20 acres, the truck stop and the housing for Skyline. Two years ago, the truck stop.
This man made this about the truck stop issue.
Okay, about the housing.
Yes.
The newspaper, this is the first I heard. I don't think we need more housing right now. I think you need more businesses. And to give away free land at Skyline or whoever's doing the housing, if they can't buy the land, what's, what's the fair market value for that? Eight acres at 12, what is it? Do you got an number? How much is it? How much is it worth?
How much for $2, $300 an acre?
Okay, well, that's $2,300 an acre, they could buy a machine to help fix the street. Because Mr. Rizzo at his town hall, a gentleman brought up, and I won't mention his name, he's here, but I won't bring it up, there's a $3 million deficit in his little scenario that was brought up that the city's gonna have to make up. So you guys raised the trash rate? You're gonna, okay, anyway, that's pretty much where I feel, is make them buy the land if they want to build the housing, because free land, you're not giving me an acre of land. I can tell you that right now. I'll put a lemonade stand on it. I'll make some money. I'll donate it to charity. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, for clarification, I think, I think Commissioner Warren offered an opinion that the land as is might sell for $200 to $300, and I think it was heard as $2,300 an acre. So we're probably talking more like, just in that opinion, you know, not a, not an appraisal, but an opinion, probably talking like $1,600, which doesn't buy very much equipment for the city. But I just want to make sure we were all hearing the same thing.
Thank you for that clarification.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Tom Langer. I'm your county public health officer, connected, of course, with the Health Department. The reason I'm here before you this evening is not because I stand in favor of or opposed to any of the items on here, but I would like to talk about process and make sure that what's going on currently does not have an unintended consequence down the road. Not too long ago, I stood before you as we were talking about the needs of the communities, and we talked about the health challenges that we face in our community. And we spoke about the need to, to look at things through a lens of making sure we consider the community's health with all of these decisions, like the ones you're going to be asked to make this evening. This one is another one that, that, I too am very thankful that the newspaper covered, because it popped up on my radar on Friday, and then I subsequently, earlier this week, had somebody ask me about this and to weigh in on it with an opinion, which I could not really do, because we haven't really had an opportunity to take a look at everything that's involved with it. I trust that, you know, that Randy is doing his due diligence to make sure that everything is done correctly as far as, you know, proposing any type of a development district and everything else. But my concern is, in doing this, are you giving up at this point in time the opportunity to, to take a look at what will ultimately happen to the properties and say, is its final use going to benefit or harm the health of individuals in the community? That's why I'm here this evening. That's the only reason that I'm here. I have a neutral bias on this, but I know when I spoke last time, Commissioner Jennings asked me some very specific questions about environmental impacts based upon things that were happening, not the least of which is a new daycare that's, that's going, and what could happen. And as I read through the article in the newspaper, I saw a lot of the same hot button issues. I smiled when I saw about a new development that's going in somewhere, and somebody says, gee, we're wondering, is the odor in the air a cause of a problem? And then on the other hand, I took a look at the other topic that's coming up, and nobody asked the question, huh, are emissions coming out there going to impact the people that live close by and all of that? I'm asking of this body to be deliberative and to, and to, to ask us, us being the Health Department, to, when decisions like this are going to be made, to at least have an opportunity to take a look at that, apply them, apply the health assessment tools that we have available to us to provide you, the policymakers, with some more information so that you can make a well-informed decision. And nobody can sit there and point at you in the future and say, well, you didn't consider the health of the community. We will do so in an unbiased fashion. We will tell you what we believe is good, we will tell you what we believe is bad. And then you will have more information to at least make a decision as you go down that, down this path. Again, I am not here to put a wrench in the works to slow things down. If anything, I am probably a very pro-growth person. I love to see things, I, I love outside organizations that want to come in and invest in our community. That means basically increased tax payments, increased hopefully jobs, better conditions for, for individuals of the community. But what I am asking is that you maybe tap the brakes on this issue and think about this and ask those questions. And Randy, I, I am curious, you know, is anything that, that is in that development that you're, that you're proposing tonight, would it restrict the city saying, hey, we see a problem down the road that we would like to address either through the issuance of permits or putting restrictions on, so that the health concerns could be addressed? That's my, that's my biggest question, and that's why I'm here, because I do have that concern. I would have felt like I did not do my job for the, for the residents of this community, had I not taken time out this evening to, to come here and, and address you. And I purposely drove by the route and came in, and as I'm going over the little bridge, I look, and there to the right, I see the junior, the junior high football team out practicing, and I think about that. Sorry, and I know it's, and that's off topic, off topic, but it's not, because they, 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 it's the same issue for both items. And, and so that's why I'm here. I will not maybe speak on the second one, but I'm hopeful that I have put the thought in your mind to allow maybe a little bit more time as this process goes on, for us to take a little bit deeper dive, to look at what the health impacts would be for a development of any type.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any more questions?
Yes, again. Ms. Langer, what, what do you mean when you say deeper dive into, what would that entail?
Here is a process that we could go through, basically, it's, it's a health impact assessment, much the same way that you would take a look at how does any of the environment impact, the hydrographic flows impact and all that. We would take a look at all of those things. We would take a look at what the planned use of the property is, how it's, how the developers envision it, how the city envisions it. And then we would, we would give you the opinion based upon our research as to what type of effects it would have on our population.
Did you do?
It would be county, it would be community-specific.
Do you do this with all the other developments throughout Cali County? Did you with the Winfield apartments?
We are, we are.
So they slowed their process down too, for the apartments they're building, they went through a health assessment as well? All the, they're doing some new construction up there. I don't know if they, did they?
That was, Commissioner Rogers, that was actually before, before we stepped forward and asked.
Done this year?
No, the, the housing, on 19th Street.
I don't know exactly where.
I, I, I'm very.
We've had some recent ones here, and I don't think we did else. I just didn't know, why?
Well, I.
Do we do this on all, in County? Do you go to all the commission meetings and do all these for everyone? And what are the other reports for some of those other locations at?
Part and parcel of what we're doing now is, is a new role for us.
And when did this start? Just today? This, this year? So, did they have, did Winfield have some new ones this year? Did they just approve new apartments?
Well, they started apartments maybe last year.
That was last year. And, and again, again, I.
I wish we would have known this ahead of, I didn't know you guys were doing this now. As a commissioner, I didn't know this was a new project, a new part of your group responsibility.
And, and in all honesty, Commissioner Rogers, this is an outgrowth and an offshoot of the data walk that was, and the information that was presented earlier this year, where we talked about what's, what's happening in Cali County, and why are our children being more adversely affected by some of these decisions? The offshoot coming out of that, as we discussed, well, why are we having these issues? Where are the problems? One of the things that the, that the Public Health Department said is, we need to step up, and we need to be a more active partner in the community, not just providing vaccinations and the REMC program, but actually filling another role in some of these types of assessments, because as an organization, we would do it in an unbiased fashion. You know, where we would take a look at it with the scope of just the health of the community involved. Not saying it's the right decision or the wrong decision, and I, and I am sorry that we did not know about this.
I wish we would have communicated to us that this is part of the new responsibilities of the city, county, and, I mean, today's Tuesday, and you, Friday, I wish you would have given Randy a call Monday or something, said, hey, you looked so, I mean, I wish there would have been more communication than just tonight at the meeting with this, all of a sudden, hey, this isn't, we're now doing this, here's what we're doing now. Oh, by the way, I knew about this Friday, I haven't had a chance to reach out to Randy at all and give him a heads up.
I apologize. So I apologize, and I will take whatever blame is, you know, that this.
And I just didn't know that this was the new role of the Health Department.
We're not doing that.
I guess I would be.
I do understand. I do understand.
What kind of timeframe does something like that take?
Depending upon the complexity of the project, you know, it can, it can be done probably within a matter of a couple of weeks to some.
Who does it?
Couple of months. We do it internally, because we.
Who's we?
The Health Department.
Yeah, but who's?
We have, we have a health assessment team within the Health Department that I, that I direct, of course, but it's.
So all new development, Cali County will have a health assessment team evaluate further development of locations?
Commissioner Rogers, it is going to be at, at the request of the organization. I cannot.
We didn't request it.
I know you did not, but I, I am also here because you did not know.
Well, why didn't we, that's, why didn't we know then?
Because it's, it is relatively new. It's like, it's like.
I know, but this should have been, I wish this wouldn't broadcast weeks or months ago instead of right now, right tonight, oh, by the way, this is it.
Commissioner Rogers, I, I, as a member of the community, again, saw it in the newspaper.
Right.
And I read it, and I said, huh. And then somebody asked me, and so my, my next question was, when is the next meeting? And this is it.
Who serves on the, oh, I'll ask you later, who's on the health assessment teams?
Well, can I, can I voice? Mr. Langer referenced my expression of concern when, in talking about the proximity of a daycare. I'm sorry, my, my granddaughter needs a ride, and I was supposed to pick her up at five, but then I was told I wasn't supposed to pick her up at five, so I came here, and now I'm finding out I'm wrong. Let me put this on mute. Anyway, anyway, that, what we, what, pardon me, pardon. Normally, family first, but I'm here, so. Putting it in the context, again, when I, when I brought that up before, but this is not that matter, it was based on what societally we have learned over time. I worked in Ponca City for 32 years for ConocoPhillips. I call myself a lifelong resident of our Kansas City, but we actually moved to Ponca City, lived there for 14 months. We lived in an area of Ponca City that became notorious, infamous, if you will, for the impact of abandoned refineries, properties, and groundwater contamination, and I can't remember the medical, medical terminology they used for that, but basically, I think it was a fetal toxin that was discovered in the groundwater that seeped up in basements, and there was a cluster of high, what is called spontaneous abortion, meaning miscarriages in that area, and it took some diligence and tenacity for concerned people to raise the issue of whether or not there was a connection between high fetal or spontaneous abortion and toxic waters or toxic, toxins, toxins in the environment. They did deem that it was. What you did see is, and if you went to Ponca City now, you will see about a one-mile green space, which is why I referenced it before, between the industrial operations and any residences. Just not smart to put houses across the fence line from an industrial site. So now I think that's kind of become, I'm sorry, it has kind of become a step in the process of redevelopment and repurposing of lands. It's a part of what we sat through when we were on the planning commission, or I think I went on the blue ribbon thing on the plan use and land management, planning, where we went through and designated. So, so the concerns, one, your voice, we haven't gotten to yet, is about future impact. The other maybe raises some concerns about past use and environmental impact on health. So you're kind of looking through a timeline from then to, into the future, and, and I do understand that. I, I don't know that, it's a deal breaker. I don't know that it's a deal breaker. We'll find out. But, but I don't know that it's not a bad thing that when we're talking about repurposing land. If we were talking about, one of the other citizens spoke earlier about abandoned residential properties or idle residential properties, those are homes, and if those are taken down and homes are replaced, then you would say that's an inlike use. But when you look at a property area where, where there's been a different type of use, and now we're talking about making it residential habitats, it might be worth a week or two to make sure we don't have a gotcha in the area that would, that would, that would, wouldn't harm us. We're all old folks, but somewhere down the line, so I don't know. I'm kind of looking for, where's the median between these? What I hear you speaking about, especially with the housing thing, is, is more about, have we, have we, are we, are we, are we confident, or to the maximum capacity, are we confident that, that that's, that's a harmonious use of that land? Yeah, thank you.
No, I just, I'm sorry. I mean, I just got to, I mean, since this is all new, and obviously new to our community, is this new health assessment team do commercial, industrial, residential developments? Is it just how, residential developments?
Commissioner, we would take a look at, we would take a look at any impacted.
So we're done, it's not just housing, are it?
It's not, it's not just.
And how many have we done in the county so far this year?
This is what we're just now working.
So this will be the first?
You guys would be the first.
All right, and then you said at the request of an organization, you would come and do this. So did someone ask you to come and do a health assessment for us?
No, sir.
All right.
I came here this evening because of my role as the public health officer.
I mean, it's just frustrating that this is now getting brought up, that we're now doing this, and our own city manager wasn't even aware that this was a new, a role of the city Health Department.
I can understand that.
All right, that's, that's, I have nothing else.
And, and I, and I again will apologize to you, because I'm so brash as to do my job. But had I not come here this evening, and something ill were to have come out of this, it would have fallen upon my shoulders, because I would have known, and I did not do my due diligence.
What do you know that we don't know?
I don't know what you don't know, but evidently, there, there must be a lot known, because it would, it would seem to me that a, a major development or development that appeared in the paper on Friday are being voted on on a Tuesday meeting, and away it goes. My question is, if that happens, are you in a position to put the brakes on later in the process to say, oh, we have a concern now? And we'd like to, and we'd like to go back and address that? Or do you give away that capacity with whatever action you take this evening? I am not here to tell you what's, what's right or what's wrong. I am here to tell you, take a moment to consider the health of your community, the same way we would in anything else, the economic health, I'm talking about the physical health and what those actions may incur. That's the entirety of this process.
Can I?
And that's, and that's, I'm sorry, I did not mean to come down here and, and get, get my name in the paper or cause a ruckus in our city. That's not my intent. My intent is to protect the health of the citizens of this county. That includes people.
Mayor, can I ask a question? So the develop, none of the, none of the agenda folks have had a chance to even talk about their project or what, and, and they're being tore up and, and telling what a horrible thing is before they've even had a chance to present it yet. I, I would ask if they could at least have time.
I agree. I think you should.
And then the other thing I did want to point out is, especially on the, on the travel center piece, we go back into two years where this has been on the agenda with different bits and pieces of it. The zoning change happened in, in '21, the archaeology study was well-known in the, in several commission meetings, and it was about the travel center. So I, I, and I want this to be misconstrued as all of a sudden, we're sneaking something in the middle of the night here. This has been in the works for, well, since 2019, when these gentlemen were first contracted with, or did the letter of intent to. we're sneaking something in the middle of the night here. This has been in the works for, well, since 2019 is when these gentlemen were first contracted with, or did the letter of intent to develop. So it was my predecessor that got it, got that in place with them and it's been going ever since.
It's going two years prior to that. So.
I just, it's four years of that stuff. I just don't want people to think that.
I say, Madam Mayor, Madam Mayor, can I, can I, can I just, in, in the interest of, of the health of the community and well being of young folks, could we take like a two minute recess so that I can call and see that someone's getting my 14 year old daughter picked up?
Granddaughter.
Granddaughter, granddaughter picked up. That would request a two minute.
I don't officially, how do we do that?
I make a motion, we go into a two minute recess.
Second, we move to the second, we go into a two minute recess. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll be back here in a minute after six.
Two minutes after six, thank you. Thank you. If you proceed with what you want to say.
It's 01.
We gotta wait till 6:02. Well, I'll let the, I'll let the developer speak and then it's how, if we're back in session, that's what I would.
Haven't finished that item on, on.
You gotta have a vote or a table or something on it.
Finish the item, I'm sorry. Mr. Langer, we have a member of our listening audience that has a question to you. It's up to you if you want to answer. But is that okay where you're asking? But. Proceed with the question.
Proceed with the question.
I think that would be his meeting, not our meeting.
Yeah, that would be, he would have to go to his. This is just a resolution.
Hold on, I say we let the developers speak before we do that, just so we can get that part in, because we got a lot of public comments. We'll let you speak. Let's go with that first. I agree. Randy, city manager.
Put on this resolution or the table at first?
Well, it. This, this, okay. So this, this resolution does nothing to feel the deal on any type of a project. It just, all it does is start the process to make a real housing incentive district for that property. If it's never used, it's never used. But the, but it has to go before the Secretary of State. And the other piece is, is it does, it does put a level, a stop on the, on the property value for any developer that might want to go forward in the future. So.
I just changed.
Why don't we let the developers? They're not on it yet.
I think we'll put the court before the horse. I would like to hear the presentation for the development.
That's what we're gonna do.
I think this, this resolution leads down below that. I want to hear the presentation. I want to support it or be against it. I want the people here to support or be against it. Make the decision of whether we want this. There's no point in doing the first. I very much appreciate Mr. Langer taking the time to come up here tonight based on a newspaper. I did the same. We're too quick to try to shove things down people's throats. The taxpayers want to listen. I want to listen. I want to be, I want to encourage those developments that I think need encouragement. And I will vote against them if it's something I can't. I just asked you to table this, Randy, until we go to table two, if we can do that, Robert's rules. Let's hear two, let's hear the presentation. Pass on it. Let's go back to one and pass.
Well, if we do one and then we don't like the presentation, it's still there for someone else then.
That's what I'm worried about. Over Mr. Landiger's already explaining that he'd like to look in. I'm saying, in essence, let's go to two. If we pass it, then we can consider Mr. Lager's end, this resolution.
Don't hurry to not rubber stamp this.
Okay, that's not, that's not, we're out of control, okay?
Do you, we want to table this?
That's, that's up to you guys.
Let's, Madam Mayor, can, can we, what's the, what's the guidance from the city manager on the way to proceed at this point?
Well, taking the step doesn't, doesn't create any issues other than it just puts, puts that piece in motion. Doesn't, it doesn't say it ever gets developed. It doesn't, it doesn't do anything other than just make it eligible. If it's approved by the Secretary of State, make it eligible for that, that type of incentive if someone desires to use it. That's up to you guys if you want to, but it's, has to be done before it's eligible. So.
So, so if we, if we don't, if we don't, if we don't address this at all, then we're really not talking about anything else on here.
Everyone has had a chance to speak on this to begin with. We either need a vote to table it or vote for or against. Move forward.
So you don't want to just reverse them? Listen.
I, how about this?
Agenda, we have to follow the agenda.
Right now, excuse me, I'm sorry. The governing body is deliberating what to do next right now.
Right now, we gave you a chance to speak.
Yeah. That, that was in response to your question, sir. We're discussing now.
Can I vote to amend the agenda to reverse it?
Yes.
But that's an option too.
What?
You can vote to reverse the agenda, amend it to reverse items.
Okay, I'll make that motion, reverse the items. Second.
We move to the second, we reverse the item. Question, seeing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Do the second. Do the first.
So this will become item number one is a resolution authorizing the city of our Kansas City to enter into a memorandum of understanding with Alfredo Sampaio, his business partners and consolidated development partners to acquire property develop a residential housing development on city owned property located in split addition of our Kansas.
So we were working on some housing grants, MIH housing grants. So we needed a developer that was familiar with them. And Rosemary Saunders with Rentson Financial introduced us to Alfredo Sampaio. He, he's working on a project in Caldwell and Wellington right now. And so we, we were in discussions with him and we're working on a MIH grant. We also showed him other properties in town that, that were available, thought for housing and they, he liked that area down there and sleep that eight acres that he felt like that would be a good place to do some workforce housing. And so we've been working with him for, I don't know, about a year or so on that now. We're kind of working through that. They've been working on their, their things, financing and, and kind of the, what they would want to do housing wise and things. And so we're at the point now where we wanted to do a memorandum, memorandum of understanding so that they can kind of move forward and get their, their financing and stuff in place and, and really dig in deep with an understanding that they would be able to, you know, have first option at that property. So it's kind of where we're at now. With that, I'll let Alfredo dig in and tell you what, what they're planning on doing.
Come forth, please.
All right. This is so much fun. This much drama since I got my citizenship. So. So first, let me, let me tell you that, you know, if you don't mind, I'm going to address them. You know, first of all, you know, we are not, I mean.
Actually, you got to jump to.
Okay, well, I, I, well, just, and the reason why is because, you know, I heard so much about the opposition there. And I kind of wanted to give them a few words, but I'm sure that they can hear me. But the, the, the whole idea behind this is, you know, I don't know how many of you guys, you know, actually studied the housing study that's done in Cali County. Right? So whenever we, we take on this, this projects and my, my background is in engineering. So I've been 12 years of engineering. And then I team up with a great group of people to do housing development exclusively on rural areas, right? So we don't do any, any development outside and we provide housing solutions. So it's really beyond the scope of just really providing housing. Anybody I think can go ahead and say, okay, we can build you a house for 165, 175, 195, you know, dollars per foot. But how many are going to come and provide you a solution that fit the needs of the community, right? So that's kind of what, what our, our goal is in here, right? Things I hear is what there are like empty houses and there are like this, it's like, hey, we, we take them. If that is a project that, that, that you guys need, the, the goal is to provide with what the houses study calls for, right? The only reason we went this direction is because whenever we talked to Randy and then they have, and then we look at the study and the study shows that we need 96 single family homes, right, from the prices of $8,000 to $130,000, right? We said, okay, that would be a good place to start to address the need, right? So which is kind of on the low income part of the, part of the project. So, so pretty much the, the idea behind this is to provide what the community is in need. That's what we focus strictly on the rural communities, right? If you want to go to my first slide, please, right? So some of the partners that I have, they're not from here. They're from the east coast is, you know, Casa Rescuers is Gordon and is Mark, right? These people are a done investments at a large scale. Just for you to have an understanding, the profit that, that you probably think that we're going to make out of this, you know, low income homes are not very much. In, in fact, it's a challenge to be able to do this project. And the reason why I took it so personal to do this as a, as a really case study is because across the nation, there is a really tremendous issue with housing in rural communities. It's not just here. You know, a few months ago, I came from Indiana, talked to the mayor and then actually helped another company doing the exact same things that we're doing here, right? So getting the properties where nobody wants to be or that there is a lot of negative connotation to it and really turning it into something that, you know, it kind of revitalized the area, right? So I, I met with several, probably a couple of dozens of builders throughout the area. And then everybody looked down upon the rural communities, right? If you have to know anything about me, I come from Argentina. I grew up poor. I, I came to this country. I slept on the streets. So I don't say that for you to kind of really feel empathy for me, but it's like, this is goes beyond me than a project. For me, it's to provide a solution that not many people want to address. And, and that is really what I'm after. I'm after a solution that we can go ahead and duplicate, not only here, but we can duplicate in other communities that are so much in need. So it is, and the team, this, this team, they address this issue. I think that's why the heart of this project is with this team, this team, and that's what we care and we Wellington, we can, we Caldwell. So go to the next slide, please. Okay, so some of the, this, obviously you know where the split addition is. If you really think about anybody that say, okay, you know, let's pick a perfect place to build a development. This would be the last place that anybody would take, right? We have the, you know, the water treatment right in front of it. That's the first negative that we had. And, and really, you know, working with Realtors around, you know, we work with three, we call three different Realtors in the area. And, and kind of just to give us an idea of the, this neighborhood. And it's not, it doesn't have the best, you know, connotation. And we're trying to change that, right? So when we look at this area, right, we don't think about, we're going to provide a, you know, okay, we're just going to put boxes in here and, and really try to make it just, you know, housing, just so that we can profit. Again, the profit is not what is important here. It's like the case study that we can duplicate in other areas. So go to the next project, please. The next slide, the next slide, please. This is the proposed site plan that, that we had in mind. So the, the first idea, because we're doing manufactured homes and then we are partnered with Skyland and they're here. And thank you for being here, guys. Just the same amount of time that I've been working with, with Randy, I've been working with Skyland. The Skyline were so gracious to change some of their design to fit the budget to be able to provide for the community that they're living as well. So this is not just an effort that we're trying to say, okay, let's go to, but do this. This is the collaboration of, of community growth. Right now, this looks about 48 units, right? They have a tremendous space for each home that you're going to be, that we're going to be providing. And, and also on the, this is kind of like the rough draft that we have, but in the middle, on the 3D rendering, we have actually a green space and then we're going to have a splash in there that, you know, that's the community, it can be really community retention pretty much. Right now, we don't know if it's going to be 48 units or it's going to be 43 units or it's going to be 40, 40 units because there are some trees that are in the way that we want to serve those trees. And then we're going to adjust accordingly to those, those, to the trees. But this is really the overall area that we're looking into developing. That is the eight acres. We're going to have four different entrances if you can go to the next slide, please. And this is the, the type of housing that is going to be provided. So they're going to be on permanent foundation. And then also on the skirting, we're going to dress them with rock or brick. So then we're going to make it look just, you know, trying to make it a little bit more appealing to the subdivision. Also, I know we talk about, you know, there, there's been some comments on, well, why do we get the, the free land? That they, you know, the free land is really, is not really that kind of big of a deal. The, the, because really the infrastructure, just to get the, the land ready, it costs about half a million dollars just to get the land ready. And I think that is something that people don't think consideration. So what do I have to do? Because really, remember I have investors that I'm responsible for and I have people that I have to say, we, we can do this. You can get a little bit of profit, but you cannot get a lot. So what do I do on my end? So I have to call all the utility companies to see if they can provide any, any incentives for us. I also call different banks, right? There's something that's called Community Reenactment Act that every bank is obligated to contribute to this community. And that's kind of how we're going to do, raise the money to do some of the free lines that is going to be between the, the, the treatment plant, maybe potentially some sidewalks, some stuff for the park area. So that is really all that goes on the side of the project. I'll go to the next slide. These houses are about 11, about 500 square foot and then Skyland is, I think it's 1173, the, the square footage. And if you have any questions about the technicalities of these homes and, and efficiency of it, that's where they're here. So they can answer some of these questions. But these homes are very comfortable. They're very big and they will be a great home for anybody that, that wants a first time home buyer for, again, right, for the needs that is on the city and also for the medium income that shows on the last housing study that has been done in Cali County. Next slide, please. We don't, we haven't walked through, but I don't know if you have the, the internet here to be able to click on that link for the next one. So this is the, this is going to be the, really the standards that the city provides, you know, the, the house offset. But these are going to be bigger yards than, than actually what the city recommends. This is the floor plan that we're proposing. All the homes are going to be three bedroom, two bath. And we might have a variation between two different homes. One is going to be about 27 by 44 and the other one might be 27 by, by 56. So we don't know yet. So we don't know yet if, if it's going to change, obviously the color is going to change. And then, um, we're going to try to have different, potentially have different elevations according, you know, depending on the, on the, on the funding. And that is really, you can, I don't know, you can click and on there to see or not, but, um, we don't have to, it just kind of shows the interior of the home. If you do, I think she, she. So the, the houses that, you know, the houses is, they're going to be nice. I think the only thing you're going to, um, and guys, correct me wrong, the, the stainless steel is not going to be stainless steel. Then they're going to be 40, uh, black appliances, uh, but pretty much the, the room is going to be, um, uh, pretty much that, that space. It's just an open space and you can turn around and it's going to be a two bedroom, a, a two bath. But anyway, so the, the idea behind, uh, this project came on really what is it that is there initially, we were going to do the modern income housing, uh, that we got declined twice already, right? And the, the reason why we try to focus so much on this is because really trying to understand, okay, what, how can we make work with the city or work with the communities and try to provide something so we don't have to wait two or three years to really work on, on, on some of these houses that is much needed? Otherwise we just continue to deteriorate, we continue to, uh, lose population. And then really sometimes at some instances like Wellington, we lose industries because we don't have enough housing. So this is really, um, you know, I, we're not here to, great problem. This is not what I was expecting, um, but we're not here to create any kind of problems. We just really trying to find a solution that, um, you know, and, and try to put our heads together, what can we do so then we can provide these houses and provide some dignity to some people that so they can own? Because it would be a lot easier to say, okay, let's create something so then we can create rentals, right? On, on rentals, we can get a project completely funded by the, uh, low income tax, uh, low income tax investor credit. We can have project completely, but we decided not to go that route again, because we want to provide something for the communities that they can have. And then to, to, um, just to add a little bit more, in Cowell, we had a chance to do land, they also have infills and, and Cowell, uh, they chose to do infills. So I don't want you to think that this is, oh, we have this great piece of land or it's this big piece of land so we can put more properties. It's just kind of how the conversation turned. If, if Randy would have said, hey, Alfredo, we have, you know, six or seven, uh, lots that we would like to rehab, what do you think? We would have been like, let's take a look at it. So it's not just because we want, uh, what volume, it's just how the conversation turned at the moment that we started this project.
So in other words, you'll be, if you do this building and stuff, you'll be selling the houses then?
Yes, yes.
And there'll be what somewhere between 100, 120,000?
Yeah. So it's going to be between, uh, it's going to be between 125, 129.
Okay. All right. Change always creates a ripple.
Yes.
You know that.
Yes.
But, uh, from the year 2000 to now, one thing has been this recurring theme song, you know, uh, we need affordable and we need quality housing. My ears just perked up a little bit when you said you're interested in infill, because I think that's probably for the taxpayers' concerns, in my opinion. One of the biggest cancers that we have in the community is that we have declining property values in places that are neglected and fall into states of great disrepair. And in many instances are abandoned and then they end up being, uh, DNR'd and be, fall back on this, into the city's lap for maintenance. Okay. When you have idle land in the core of a city, you're basically redistributing that tax burden on the people who have habitable housing. So I'm excited that you're not running away from infill housing. Is there need for housing? Absolutely there is. Is there any, uh, when I came in? I'm not talking to you. Sorry. So when I came onto this governing bodies, uh, assembly here, uh, with someone who wanted to develop, order to half million dollar homes in a community where, I'm sorry, let me just dump my brain here. What I see is quarter to half million dollar homes, 1,500 to $2,000 rental properties. And I see us now talking about dual income families. Mom, dad are working, the kids are abandoned and so now we need to industrialize daycare because mom and dad can't be home to take care of the kids. That's what I see as, I'm more concerned with housing that working class wage earners can afford to live in, to address what we don't want to talk about in the community, which is the growing homeless population needs a conversation to. All of, that's the community I live in and see, okay? I, I, I don't see the half million dollar clientele. I see this, so, so, so what I see is one, we're talking about a place that sits idle. It's city owned property now, so it's generating no meal assessment at all. Some meal assessment is better than no meal assessment. Now do, how do we do it? Do we just race into it willy nilly? Of course not. We have the wastewater treatment plant bounding on the south. We have an abandoned refinery bounding on the east. Maybe it's worth the time to say, let's make sure we do this right if we're going to do it at all, okay? All right. So, so, so that's the second thought in my step in my, uh, I'm sorry, did cover them all. Concern about people who have lost their homes, people who are homeless, people who are renters who want to become homeowners, but can't afford a $250,000 house. You know, we're trapped in this inflation, this post COVID inflation, inflated housing prices, you know, that is again pushing people out of the market, excluding people. And so for what the, uh, data walk and census 2020 showed us, this is a need. Affordable housing, affordable quality housing in our Kansas City. I think we've did maybe gotten like a double, maybe all the way to the wall, just getting this far in the dialogue with interest in this, my thoughts.
And just to, just to add, you know, uh, infill, you know, logistically as a project is a lot easier than developing.
I'm just, you just because, because we're already overwhelming people with, with the, with the conversation right now. So, so that's, that's something I'd, it'd be neat if we could talk about in the future. But functionally, I, what I see is what we're looking at is an effort to meet a need. According to the, am I talking too much, Mattamir? No, you could, you could stop me if you want me to stop.
Why don't you go just a little bit more?
Okay, okay. Okay. All right. Thank you. But, but functionally, I'm reading the tea leaves and it says, we have a housing problem. It is a contributing factor to our employability problem, you know? And we still have, I believe buses bringing workers.
Three buses a day.
To our local, our largest local in town employer now out of Wichita.
I meant within.
So, so I'm just saying, I think this conversation should be framed around what's the community need? It is for affordable housing, okay? All right. And, and, and we do need, and I mean, use, I want to tie those together. Like you're struggling with the, whatever, whatever reinvestment?
Reinvestment, housing and some.
Okay. Anyway, but, but affordable quality housing, okay?
Yes.
Now we want to make sure it's put in the right place and in the right way, okay? And, and, and so those, that's what I'm processing here. If I, if we were going to vote on something, those would be the things that are filtering through my mind, is this appropriate for that?
My question. Are you going to do a trial type thing? Are you going to do so many homes and then try to sell them? Or are we just going to go into this project, one, two, three, four, five, until we get up to our 43 or 48?
No. Um, so the, the initial thought was, um, so we were going to do faces initially, uh, but then we, after kind of further evaluating, then we have to almost have the entire infrastructure ready, uh, you know, for a couple of reasons. If we're going to do the R T D, uh, and also just to create a sense of community in the area, um, I don't think it would, the project would be successful or as successful if we should say, okay, we're going to build two or three homes in here, right? So the idea is to really build them, to build them all.
What happens if they don't sell like you think they're going to?
Uh, uh, when, and that's the, that is the risk we take, you know? That is really, that is really why I think it should be, um, uh, I think in, in a way, if, if we can get anything, just respect it out of that, because nobody's going to come and, you know, dump, you know, $20 million on a project that they might know. So, um, we are doing the necessary study and we've done, I've been working this more than a year, uh, not only with the housing study, not only with the industry, not only with the city, uh, but also other communities, right? So, uh, you know, just even though it might seem like I have not been doing this long, but I, I'm astuteous of whatever the issue is and then I get to work. So, um, we don't really think that it's not going to work or there's not going to sell. Otherwise we're not going to be able to, you know, I want to be able to get these people, this coming from the east coast and say, okay, we're going to invest on this project.
Thirty seconds, thirty seconds, Mattamir, thirty seconds, thirty seconds, 20?
Let me get these other guys.
Can I, can I remind you also?
Three minutes, three minutes.
Cause I, I just want to remind her about this is an MOU. This isn't, uh, sealing this deal of the night. This gives us 90 days to, to do deal diligence and work through some of the issues that we're hearing tonight. So I just want to make that clear. This isn't like.
No.
The seal in the deal of the night. This is, gives us time to, to him to present the project, the idea, and then us to work through the issues and problems that may be out there. So I just want to say that.
20 seconds.
That's it.
20 seconds. If I understood correctly, we also have a local business partner that has an economic interest in this also. Am I correct? Did you mention?
Skyline.
Skyline.
And the, and the, and the, yes. And, and so don't they build these structures here? And so isn't that somehow being a friend to a local entity?
Good point, good point.
Thank you.
Yes.
You just stole my words.
I'm sorry. Forget what I said.
Got two people that want to speak. You have a minute to say what you want to say. Go ahead, Jerry.
I have two questions. Randy, you said you've been working on this for a year. How come this last week in the paper, the first that I've heard of? I get the paper every day. I get online every day and look at city commission. How come this is the first time we've heard of it?
A lot of things that we work on, uh, throughout the year that doesn't come to the point, it can be to, that we bring it to the commission. We have to work out details and things like that before we bring it forward. It's not uncommon. It's not anything sneaky or anything else. When we're working with him, that, you know, we're working through issues and trying to put together a project and, and there's, so there's no reason to.
They could have gotten all the way to the point where they finally said, you know, it's not going to work and backed out. So then I bring it up two years ago.
For you, Mr. Roberts, body language from the health department guy stood up, said it all. Why are you in a hurry to rubber stamp?
I'm not in a hurry at all. My concern, my concern with him was he has a health assessment team and it was brought up tonight with no communication to any of the commissioners that I've been aware of, none to the city manager. It was just all new to me. So why is this all suddenly, I mean, it could be flipped either way.
During the health study, you care about?
My body language was upset with how this was lack of communication to the city commission.
There are points been made. Sit down, sir. Mr. Matthews. Excuse me, excuse me.
Please come.
Yes.
How much is it going to cost to put in sewer lines, water lines, streets? We're going to have to rename this, Sleep Edition Street going in. All of Sleep Edition. Operating on 30 and 40 year old lines down there. All of this new, I'm not against the program. I'm just wanting to know how much it's going to cost that we have to pay to put in the streets and the water and the sewer and all of that, Randy?
So there, there's already sewer and water there. This, 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 um, area was, uh, set up for housing back when it was put in. So all that's there, um, in, in, in the area right now on that property.
How long has it been there?
Well, it's probably been there a long time, like the rest of the community.
Same thing, same thing we're seeing in Arc City. When it's breaking, is the sewer big enough to handle that anymore?
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Is the water condition big enough to handle that much more?
It was.
The streets?
Those are good questions.
Well, that, that's some things, but that's what the rule, the reinvestment, uh, housing in same district does. It's what pays for those things.
Arc City is going to be out some money for the road. Who's going to pay for the road?
Now the developer puts that in and then is reinvest with those, with the tax increments.
What you're telling me is Arc City is not going to be liable for any money whatsoever for this development?
Not the big dollars you're talking about. Now we may.
Great question, because.
Yeah.
Arc City is not going to be responsible for any money in this bill. Wrecks water, your things.
Well, some of the things we've talked about is doing the same assistance that, uh, has been done for, uh, the compass point where we, uh, provide the hookups for the, for the homes, because it meets the same require, or the, the amount of homes that, uh, compass point had. So there'll be some of those in kind services, uh, proposed to.
Which also brings in more money for the city.
Yeah.
But Arc City is going to be out some.
We won't be, we have for the, for the meters and those types of things, yes, uh huh?
Okay, sir. Let me get one more guy here.
Okay.
First of all, I want to applaud you for coming to Arc City. Stepping forward to do what we've needed a few years. I myself put in a, what's called subdivision, a mobile on part in Arc City. Nothing says, as you're talking about, I propose to this committee, a couple of new people, the old commission, a couple of years ago, doing the same thing with these same lots, only I couldn't afford to do six or eight homes at a time a block. You're really stepping up to 40 homes. I, with math, you're doing a four or five billion dollar project in Arc City, Kansas, something we very much need. We had the last study I saw was we need 300 or so homes in Arc City. I hope to welcome these in Arc City and hope you're so successful, you're looking for another piece of ground in six months to, 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 to. Thank you. And I mean that sincerely.
Yes.
Now, a couple of bad things.
Yeah.
I very much understood what Mr. Laniger said. With a refinery shutdown and the sewer treatment plan and an addition on the sewer treatment plan, I'm concerned about health in that area that I wasn't concerned about two years ago when I looked at. So during this 90 day period Randy's talking about, can we meet your criteria? Can you provide this ground test, water test, air test to do it? Saying that, I would like to see the city proceed with you and be the first man to welcome in Arc City.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Awesome, thank you.
Go ahead, Jay.
Well.
So one, one of the others, please first.
Okay. So I'm looking at your timeline checklist.
Yes.
That you have here and a few of the things in the first 45 days or the next, you've already completed. And so you're on target to, and the memorandum of understanding gives you the 90 days. And so you're on target to, and the memorandum of understanding gives you the ninety days, a hundred and twenty, that were ninety days, timeline that you're looking at, right?
Yeah, so right now where we are, you know, and I understand the environmental portion that there is a concern. So right now, I'm working with the civil engineer. So that's kind of where the process we are right now, because we need to do the best we can. You know, we have to carry on just like any other big development that you do, and which you do in any other big cities. We, just because this is a manufacturer home, doesn't mean that we're gonna take any, like, you know, we're gonna cut any, you know, corners. But right now, I met with the civil engineer last week, and then we're in the process right now of actually setting up a strategic plan of how we're going to proceed in the next ninety days with civil.
So.
And I truly appreciate that you have brought in Skyline, and, and how they have adjusted to fit that price line that you're going for.
Oh, they put up with us a lot.
Yeah. So I think that's, that's really wonderful that you came and brought those two things together that would, you know, financing and.
On property around town that we have too, you know, if it's like works out, you know, stuff.
Yeah, so just for, for you guys to know, you know, in, in the whole model that we do this, the whole development, is the idea of providing the community not only with the housing that they need, but also including the community with the resources that it has. Because otherwise, it would be really silly to say, okay, we're going to go ahead and do housing here, and then, you know, recall Clayton Homes, you know? So that is the internal joke that we have. But, you know, it would be really silly to have, you know, resources outside of, of Ark City. So, and this happens, we, we work on Wellington, then we try to really integrate anything that has Wellington, you know, to the best of our capacity. So, so we are really happy working with, with Skyline. They've been, they've been really a godsend.
Thank you.
I might, I might say this, you know, we, my kids and future kids played ball down there. You know, when they were little stuff, you know, the fire on one side and wastewater plant on the other. Of course, we had a lot of stink down there when it got hot, that's, you know. But now, you know, if it's a new wastewater plant with the lids on their stuff, we're not gonna have that quite smelly that it used to be. So we've had thousands of kids, you know, over forty years, play ball down there and stuff. Nothing really, you know, I mean, far as I can tell, went wrong with them and stuff. But since you don't have a problem, we could still do this, what we're talking about, this evaluation during this.
Health volunteers.
Okay, well, that being said, we're on. Go ahead. Go ahead. That being said, you know, I wanna make a motion on number two, since we're on number two. Then we'll have to go back to number one.
Two is one now. So we are at one. You're on one. Two is, two is one. One is two, and two is one.
I'll make a motion that we, a resolution making certain findings and determinations to the need for housing within the city of Arkansas City. And setting forth the legal script.
Wait a minute, no, 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 we're.
Number two.
Number two, number two is one, this one.
Yeah, go ahead and do number two.
That's what, that's what I said, you said no, but, okay, number two, a resolution authorizing the city of Arkansas City to enter to a memorandum of understanding with Alfredo Sampeo.
Yes.
His business partners and considerationate development partners to acquire property to help residential housing development on a city-owned property located in Sleep Edition of Arkansas City.
Second.
Moved in second. Is there any further discussion from the commission?
Madam Mayor, I, I do need to clarify one thing, and I express my confidence that Mr. Langer could probably move expeditiously through his evaluation, because we need to also state that even though there was a refinery, a abandoned refinery, is an abandoned refinery. They did go through an E P A assessment and did have to do remediation of the top soil, and they have done it for several years. So we shouldn't expect to find any gotchas at that site.
Well, including on top of that, we've had a ball field down there for fifty, forty years still on top of that, so catch your play and stuff.
Further discussion?
Yeah, go ahead.
See no further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Number one, two.
We need to go back to number one. So number, okay, I think we're at the resolution making certain findings as item two now.
You can make that motion.
Are we, are we, are we ready? You ready for the motion on that? Madam Mayor, I would move that we adopt a resolution making certain findings and determination as the need for housing within the city of Arkansas City, Kansas. Setting forth the legal description for real property and propose to be designated as a reinvestment housing incentive district within the city.
Been moved in second. Is there further discussion? At this, at this time, I'd like to reiterate what you said about doing the, the health study, so that this here will work on. Any further discussion?
Okay, so are, are, are we wanting, let's voice that then, excuse me, let's voice that, that we would, we would be supportive of the reinvestment initiative of the county. What's your, Mr. Langer, can you give me your title again, please?
The one that does it.
Public Health Officer for Cali County to partner with city manager and whomever is necessary to kind of complete the assessment, is that?
So I would like some clarification. So what, there, there is a, there is, this, this thing takes time. So are you saying don't start it until after his assessment? Because then that puts Alfredo behind on his. It's absolutely, unless there's a project, it, it does nothing. It's absolutely worthless unless there's a project, and that's a whole nother step that has to be taken. So just to do this, just to set up this district, doesn't commit to anything. It just, it just puts that tool.
Timeline on and starts the timeline, and I just.
And by, well, and obviously, if that's land that has the potential to be developed, we may as well know that and take those questions out now. So why not do a concurrence, as opposed to saying, other things that need to go on can go on, but this can go on? It's, it's just another activity happening in that whole process, is my understanding.
I, I might add just for a point here, that you might clarify for the clerk what the actual motion is. I would recommend the motion as written. If you want other things to be dicta, and to say, we'd like you to do this, then to do it that way. But I think she's gonna need language.
Well, that number two, we've already got that in that number two.
Right, but exactly.
So I don't think we really need a number one. All we're doing on that number one is just, is that right, Randy?
Sure. Yeah, we're just kind of setting up the district, and it's, it's, it doesn't do anything unless there's a project. So it doesn't.
You don't need a condition or anything.
I don't think, I don't think that having a condition on it matters. The conditions will come with a project that's developed.
It's just the timeline, I think, is what Randy is trying to say. If we have this done first, then that's Alfredo.
Right. Right.
So.
Been moved in seconded. See no further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Ready for item number three?
Ready for number three.
A resolution authorizing the transfer of certain real estate being attractive land situated in the northeast quarter of section nineteen, thirty-four south, range four east of the sixth principal, median, out in Kansas, to name lands, venture, LLC.
So I'll give you a little bit of a timeline, so, because I'll make sure everybody understands that this isn't, just pop up, I don't know where. So in August of two thousand nineteen, there was a letter of intent signed with the city and, and the developers, different con, to do, to develop a national travel center site. And then, of course, we all know what, that COVID happened in there, and, and so that slows everything down and messes things up. In June of twenty twenty-one, we did an extension with them on that, to give them some more time to put the project together. During that time, we started a traffic study for that corridor in there, and that was completed on July of twenty twenty-one. And basically, what we found there was that the, the travel center wasn't going to increase any traffic in the area that wasn't already there. And the roundabout was capable of holding it. The only really condition that needed to happen out of the, of the traffic study was a right turn lane needed to be added on Kansas Avenue to help assist with the, because there would be additional traffic on Kansas, we'll clarify that. But up on seventy-seven and one sixty-six and all that, it wasn't gonna increase traffic. So that was kind of the outcomes of that study. Everything else, as far as it's concerned, was fine. But during, so July thirteenth of twenty-one, the Planning and Zoning Commission did approve rezoning that property to C three for commercial property. And then that came, their, their approval came before the commission on August third of twenty twenty-one for a commission approval, so that rezoned the property. And then during that timeframe, when all that was in the newspaper, some concerns were raised about Etzenoa and some of that stuff there. So we hired a, an archaeologist to do phase one and phase two of a cultural resource study. After they did that, they determined that there wasn't, they didn't find anything of significance on that property for related Etzenoa. And, but they did recommend that we, when this project moved forward, that we did have monitoring onsite during the grading portion of it. So at the point they start grading the ground, there would have to be archaeologists onsite to make sure nothing does come up that they didn't find earlier. And then here recently, the, these gentlemen received a letter from a loan approval from their bank, so all that's in place. So now they're ready to kind of start moving forward. The next step then in this process would be to transfer the ownership of the land to them. And we did, in the deed, we did put a clawback clause in there. So if they didn't move forward with the project in a, in a timely manner, I can give them two years to start, then ownership of the property works back to the city, so we'll move that. So with that, do you gentlemen want to kind of outline your project and what you have going on, or?
My name is Asif.
I'm Mark. My name is Khan Lafar.
I'm sorry, what are you saying?
Next speaker, please.
Lafar Khan, my name, we are, we are a small developer. We developed the truck stop and hospitality business. It's I.
Speaker, please.
I haven't been getting a mic, please, a microphone or something? So. Uh. Turn the.
Madam Mayor, in the interest, so that we don't, so that we honor the decorum of this official meeting, it's okay, can we say it's okay for them to stand and maybe face inward so their voices can be heard in both directions? That way, we can stop the interruptions from the galleries.
So they can get a hallmarks too.
Yeah. Thank you.
So, you know, this.
This, that doesn't protect it. I know. I know, I'm sorry.
Randy, you didn't tell me for all of this.
Would have came.
I thought, you know, we're spending that much money in the middle of nowhere. But anyway, yes.
You know, so we, we are in this process for the last three, four years, as you know. So by the meantime, you know, we have already have, we have a plan for, for the truck, truck wash area over there. But due to environmental things, and it can mix in the water, you know, so we abandoned that plan. It's just going to be a, like a Q S R restaurant and a truck stop with showers and, you know, the regular pilot flying day or T A or loves, that's kind of place. So city told us they have any need, you know, for the truck stop for a while. We have a contract signed with the attorney a couple of times. Free land, I'm hearing, you know, that's very strange. I don't know if you are familiar with Allen, Texas? That's one of the million-dollar properties over there. In the beginning, they gave million, they gave lot of land over there to develop the restaurant. Just for your awareness, I don't know how much of the land is, you know? But twelve acre land, we already spent on the soft cost, we already spent hundred and fifty thousand on this project. Not cash money, V I A check, which I can give you guys. On the approval, on the word of Randy and the guy before him, and the city attorney signed the letter. Otherwise, thirty-five is only sixteen miles from here, you know? So we thought that the city need the truck place, we studied it, you know, instead of they are there everywhere parking, they need a staging area. So that's why we went this product. We go ahead without bank, we almost spent, as I say, hundred and fifty thousand dollar on this project, which is more than the cost of the land. We have to build two detention pond on this property. Is Smith and Oak is our civil engineer, Chris, I don't know if you are guys familiar with him? He is working on this project since last two year with us. This land is worth zero value because it's in the flood planning. We have to work with OSHA and this to get it out from the flood zone, which we have to spend one foot above the padside, you know, which we have to spend extra money, which we don't have to do anywhere else. For this one year till we get it out of the OSHA, we have to get a flood insurance, which costs money. City of Art not willing to pay a single penny of it.
To add on that, when we, why we took over this project, and it, and two days before, the city told us at that time, they did the study, that they are losing a lot of diesel volume to other cities. And they are not getting the revenue that they should get because the traffic goes from here to other places. I don't have the exact calculation in mind, but maybe you already have the study, because we got the study from the city. Then there was a problem, this, he told us that trucks right now staging inside the street, inside town, and they want to go around the loop. And they won't go until there's something over there that will solve their problem too. And plus, they will get the revenue from the diesel that will be sold from here. Plus, they will get the employment from here and a nice for people to go by.
Yeah, it's not going to be like, you know, worn-out cases and all that. It's gonna be a brand-new travel center.
And then, and when done, the, the land was a big piece of area. We said, okay, we will develop the portion of it, and rest of the land, the city can sell for high price later on, once that development is there. And, and there will be a lot of tax.
It's a win-win situation, you know, tax money coming, property tax going to come, you know, unemployment tax going to come, you know? Selling beer and wine from there, you know, selling the diesel volume, you know, which is going to the thirty-five on the other city, you know?
It's all about sales tax.
All about sales tax.
Sales tax. What's the value, I mean, what's, what's it gonna cost to build that?
You know, if you build, I'm, I'm, I'm associated, I'm a dealer in Texas with the pilot flying day. I bring pilot flying day people, remember, Randy? Were there before? But for them, like loves and pilot flying day, they do a million gallon a month, you know? So for them, it's a very small, we, 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 we studied it, we, we're gonna do like three hundred, three fifty, something like that per year, per month, per month. So for pilot flying day, they did the studies, they offer us, they might put there another low brand. That's why we're keeping the diesel site open, not sign, it will be under, it's still under shell, but we're not signing the contract. Only thing, we're signing the gas forecourt with the shell and with Red and Hall people. So to answer your question, for even this size of development, this is going to cost us minus the gold lint value, it's going to cost us seven to eight million dollars.
Which we have the loan already approved.
I have a loan approved for six point five million.
You have other truck stop?
Yeah, I, I have another truck stop in Canton, I have a truck stop. Then we are developing, coupled with the, in the initial stage in Arkansas. So, and we are in the hospitality business, which is the reason we want there, we want to, I, I, we, we are, we are building right now Holiday Inn Express in Anna, Texas. I don't know if you are familiar, you can Google it. And then we have a Candlewood Suites in Temple, Texas. So we are, and right now, we are developing Fairfield Marriott in Arkansas. And by the way, that land is given to us too, which only costs five hundred thousand, the project costs ten million dollar. So just, it's not like the land was given, and the land is, you know, ready to build. It need like almost five, six hundred thousand, just dollar to make it where this, after grading, to make the level where it start going vertical.
You have to talk to the civil engineers, architects, all those, and they all want to get paid before they even look at it and do anything. And so we worked with the city and there, I mean, before Randy has allowed to ask us to do the development in this area, this is a really fun to do it, yeah, there's a lot of work, that's why we are offering you. So his intention was at the time that they will make more money. Once we get this one, maybe bring hotel next to it. And some, I mean, there's a fish pond area, he said he will probably development that road later on, people will go.
Or picnic.
Well, we got the big Yes and No discovery that, you know, we run across street from, you know, for another motel.
Yeah, and then, you know, we're still taking a chance because if the, during gradings, they find something over there, all the money gone.
Do you have any questions?
I can answer any question, I think I excuse my language, but I was listening for last two hours.
Will you be the owner operator?
Yes, yes. I don't believe in.
And how long have you been, I mean, how long have you had those other truck stops?
Their truck stop in Canton, I have since two thousand twelve. I was the first dealer with Pilot Flying J in Texas. After that, they are now millions. And then we have a truck stop in El Verido, we sold it. Because, and then now we are in the, we developing a DK truck stop, as I told you, in Arkansas, and one in Perry, Oklahoma, which is not far from here.
Right. I know we got problems, you know, we're, right now, the Creekstone, you know, they park up there, skyline road, you know, stuff, and then after.
That's why we have enough parking over there.
Yeah. And then nights when the Casey's closed down, you know, they have no place to go to the bathroom or that's like that, you know, piled up there and stuff.
We're going to have four showers in there and a big, big bathroom for ladies and gents.
Is that your layout?
No, no, this is just, we went to the Chris, so he just, he just, he wanted something to, for the detention pond. So that's where we are.
Have some questions from the audience?
Thank you, you guys can sit down, I think, or at least, yeah, may stand at the side.
If I might, I had trouble hearing back there, I might have a couple of great questions. I couldn't hear, where you said you had an existing?
In Canton, Texas. Canton?
Canton, Texas, okay, thank you, and you're selling a million gallon?
No, we are doing seven hundred over there.
Seven hundred thousand?
A month.
A month, yeah. So that's three hundred, no, that's thirty five hundred trucks a month you're filling?
That's pilot, it's under pilot umbrella.
So it's thirty five hundred trucks a month you're filling?
Yes.
And you think you can do that in Arc City, Kansas?
No, I'm saying.
Talking about.
He said three hundred.
Seven hundred and fifty.
Is what he's doing down there, I think he said three hundred or three hundred and fifty thousand here.
gallons a day, or a month, is what you're expecting. So you're going to do a hundred trucks a day, a hundred, a hundred and fifty trucks, but Creekstone brings in fifty. I'm having trouble with math, first of all. I would never invest in your program in Arc City, Kansas, there's a lot of better places to put it. I'm also concerned that we're giving ground to entrepreneurs yourself, nothing against you. That's going to put five other people that are making livings, family in Arc City with small truck stops. And I'm talking about the total station, I'm talking about the, the pan bought Mike Rose out across the street. He has talked to my bellist about putting in the truck pumps at his place to help him make a living, to pay off money. Casey's making living, we've got Wal-Mart's making a living. How can the city sit here and compete with five existing families in town by giving away somebody ground in town? I don't, I don't buy that, I don't like it, I don't think it's right. I stood here a minute ago and fully support housing, and he's not a competitor to any of us in housing because we have such a need. We don't have a need for a truck stop. Let me explain a couple of things about, I can't tell if he's waving.
No, I'm not, I'm begging for air.
I, I tell you, as a truck owner, we have to buy our fuel based on the state we run in. I'm in Arcane City, Kansas, to go to Canton, Texas, I have to buy the equivalent. And my fuel mileage for my fleet is running about five miles to the gallon, fifty gallon to go through Oklahoma and fifty gallon to come back. I can only buy two gallon in Kansas, because I'm going five miles out of Kansas. I wouldn't use these truck stop now for any other reason that I can't buy the fuel here. I'm penalized by the ETA program for not buying the fuel in the state I use in it. If I get to Canton, Texas, I'm more than happy to buy a fuel bar, because I've got to buy fuel for, if I go clear to Houston, I have to buy that amount of fuel for the entire state. His fuel stop here in Arc City, Kansas, will not work. There's no trucks, the cattle trucks that are coming in for Creekstone, we use them for an example, they're coming up forty four into Oklahoma into Kansas, one gallon of fuel in Kansas, possibly two. Talk about parking spots, I counted this morning. There were twelve trucks parked along the road between my office and Casey's. There were six tractors parked on Casey's parking lot. There were eighteen at Total when I had coffee at six o'clock in the morning. Total is providing more truck parking for Creekstone drivers than that road is, or Casey's is. I don't think we need a truck stop, I think we need a parking lot for trucks. Kurt Freeland bought, at my behest or helper, encouragement, I guess would be the best word, gelink iron over here across street from the city shops, with the idea of putting a truck parking lot in. And he was going to use the little building for whatever city purpose, because it's right across from the city shops. That never happened. We bought the ground to do it, we didn't use it. We bought this ground. I was at the commission meeting the other day, but I understand that Commissioner Rogers suggested that the hospital might be a good place to put a wreck.
I didn't, oh, the wreck center, yeah. I didn't say that, I said, I said it's a health and, it's a health and fitness area, that's where a wreck center could go, because that land has to be used for health and wellness.
We got Etzenoa going in, we need or like to have a new wreck center. Any wreck center I've seen in other communities is a big building surrounded by.
Timmy, we'd be written off.
Okay, my point is, I don't think the city's got any business giving anybody ground to compete with local business. That's wrong. I don't know anything about these gentlemen, I'm not against anything they want to do. They want to put their hard earned money into something that's going to fail, so be it. I will point you able to work in Arc City. I'm not trying to discourage you, I'm trying to say, as well as I'm.
Can I say something? You are, now you are talking directly to me.
Okay.
So can I tell you something?
Certainly.
Lot of people, you know, and I was in another city, and they were, there be like ten or twelve people, the local businesses go to the city not to allow Walmart, because they're going to eat up all of us. This is the country of opportunity, my friend, we are taking risk, we are taking the chance, you know, and we believe in it.
You're doing everything right.
Yeah.
Except you want me as a taxpayer to give you the ground to do it on.
This is nothing, this is nothing unusual.
Finish my story.
You can talk to them.
I have purchased some ground on South Summit. I have, am working with a convenience store truck stop. We have surveyed the ground, we have the drawings in place, so he may also be competing with me. I'll put my cards all on the table, I mean, I have a signed contract at this point. But I think it's coming. And it's with a convenience store company that has six hundred locations in Kansas, Oklahoma and Texas. They will be the leasing, they will be the main, I'll only build the building and rent it to them. But I think they've got a winning.
Our, that's going to work for him, truck stop is not going to work for me.
Ladies and gentlemen, my concern is the location of this truck stop. Around about, just a moment, down the street.
It's your name and address, this is the city.
Ronnie Jenkins, three twenty five North C Street. My concern is the middle school down the street. When I go through there, as I sent all of you an email, I bicycle by there every single day. And if you go there between seven thirty and eight fifteen, the traffic from Summit to the bypass is bumper to bumper, with more traffic coming off the bypass. It seems to me to put a truck stop there, you're going to cause more traffic, more problems and potential danger for middle school students who come and go through there and their parents. We have a hundred and sixty acres around the hospital, there's motel there, that would seem to be a better position, closer to Creekstone.
Can't do that, try it because it's not hospital related.
Okay, I'm sure.
Health or wellness.
But nonetheless, to put it here is putting, I think, our middle school students and their families in danger because we increase traffic and potential for danger to them, and I think it's a foolish move just to get twelve acres back on tax rolls. It doesn't make any sense, excuse me.
Another person back there?
My name is Stephen Walker, I live in that area, I live off D Street. Several things, I've worked at a truck stop, I know what truck stops bring in. We don't have a problem with prostitution in this town, truck stops bring in prostitution, they do. I don't want to smell the cart, the trucks, I don't want to smell the trucks you pull into Walmart, what is that? We live in that area, lots of people live in that area. The emissions coming off of the trucks, those emissions are going to settle over our absence, over the middle school. It doesn't make any sense why he would put that in the, in the town, that, that's, truck stops are outside of town, not in town, all outside.
My name is Roger Sparks, Arcana City. I've been on Main Street about as long as anybody that's here, and I will, I will tell you about the conversation about the bypass. Every merchant in this town lost a lot of their business because of the bypass. Curtis Freeling, Herb Nocke, Jim McNichol, everybody lobbied the merchants not to object to the bypass for flood protection. And in that, they gave us their assurances they would never develop anything along the bypass. And the reason and the rationale was, it's terrible property to, to improve. But now it does have some value. When it came up a few years ago, I came straight into that city manager's office. And he saw so me and told me nothing was in the works, I find out now that's not true. This man said, one city manager told him it's a go deal, another city manager told him it's a go deal. And we're down on Main Street, and five other dealers that are paying taxes, that have never had any enough guts to say, give me the money to do my business, to give me the tariff permit so I can build a business on. If they have a good business plan, they can buy the land. If they can't buy the land, they don't have a good business plan. But the effects on this town are irreversible. It is not a good place to put a truck stop, there's too much traffic out there already. I think maybe there is a place for a truck stop here, but not there. North of town, you've got a four lane highway all the way out. There's the place away from the population, you have more land there, it's probably easier to buy, it would be a better place to do it. The inconvenient truth is, we ought to be able to, as investors, and I own five buildings this town. We've had nothing but property tax increases, nothing but property tax evaluation increases, and we're paying them all. And downtown has been asked to put in windows, maintain their storefront, invest. You put your business in that, there, you didn't ask them to give you the money, pave the land, give you a study or anything else, you took the risk. That's what business is. This notion that we, that this is unvaluable land, it doesn't cost anything? You know what that bypass costs? We did it twice, didn't we? I think we built it twice, forty or fifty million dollars. I understand why they would want to put something there, and if you'll give them the land, they'd be foolish not to do it. But if, that is not what a city should do. What would you do if I come and said, you know, well, I'll just take, give you the example. I, when I blocked the gas service company building, there was empty lot behind the lot, behind the building, that had been used by the gas service company to park their trucks. So I just continued to use it. I was approached by the city manager and said, if you're going to continue to use that land, you need to buy it, put it on the tax form. I believe it's sixty five hundred dollars, kind of remember that, because it seemed like a lot of money for a gravel parking lot that my predecessor had gotten for nothing. But we've never had this notion that businesses should be underwritten by the, the city that compete with the taxpayers in the city. Ed McGowan was promised when he was alive, that that would never have a fuel sales place out there on that. And not for him and Millie not to worry about it, there's third generation in there now, and this will destroy that. This will destroy all of your local ownership, you won't have anybody in that business. It probably will also affect the other chains that are here. I don't know what Jim has planned, I've seen a lot of things he does, and this thing's good. There's nothing wrong with these gentlemen bringing a truck stop into this area, but do it with your own money, then the taxpayers have no complaint about it. Put it in a place where it has no impact on our students, no increased traffic, and does not affect the traffic patterns around our town. We've already lost too much. This is just an inconvenient truth that nobody else hasn't invested in, but I did. And I ask you, if you're going to welcome them to town, don't give the land away, they can invest in it or not come.
Anyone else? Thank you.
Just want to answer one thing, we did, I'm not one to offend anyone by bringing the business here. But one thing I did diligently write what I was offered two, three years ago, is it my fault that I work on that? Thank you.
Can we just follow, or, I mean, there's no need for any other things? Actually, I just want to respond on the two gentlemen's that spoke. One gentleman said the truck stop with that place is the bad.
So on, Mr. Speaker, if I can't hear him with the audience?
I mean, I just wanted to respond, I mean, to respond to the two gentlemen's that spoke. The first one said that trucks, that place, truck stop is a bad, bad area, they won't do any business. And the next person came and he said, oh, this is the place he will ruin everybody. So you can imagine, but the study that was done by the K D O, they said there will, there will, there will not be any increased traffic. Randy said, those are the people who sit and study. And that's why they have like one additional lane, and that's it, they won't impact anything, all the studies are done. City themselves did the study that to, in order to not having the trucks within the city limits and cause problems and dangerous traffic and other things, they need to have that thing outside the city. Outside the city also means that businesses inside, most likely, they won't go just over there just to take the fuel, that the traffic going to roundabout, to going to the other state or the, or the areas, that will come over there. The study that we did, they also see the traffic that's already passing back to the bypass, not going in town. So I just want to add those things. And other thing is, one gentleman spoke on the Casey. Now Casey is a big chain, they already have four, five here, they are taking over businesses right now, so not like us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I'm going to start out saying this, that, you know, that property right now, you know, even if, you know, given it to them and stuff, still not a valuable piece of property, I mean, a hundred dollars or five hundred dollars or whatever. For them to put in a six. You know, it's, you can't, you can't do it that, you know, our income is the sales tax. And they, it looks like to me, they were generated. And for them to spend seven, eight million dollars, I'm sure they've done a study that's worthwhile, you know, to protect them, that's going to be feasible, then that they can make some money. Ours, the pans, Neil, grows. You're, the, he's going to get the same trucks there that he does right now, you know, he's not, he, I talked to him not too long ago, and he didn't think the, the, the truck stop would bother him that much because he, the people that's in town, you know, there's the pipes and stuff like that are continuing to get fuel from them. They're not going to go to the truck stop, you know? So, you know, I don't see a problem on that. But, you know, I think KC needs competition, you know? I mean, they're, they got three stores here and stuff, and it gets kind of like the monopoly type thing. So, you know, this is my two cents worth. I think that in far as, you know, the, uh, traffic stuff, we did a traffic study, the KDOT did, and they assured us that, you know, that, that doing that center lane, turn-in lane stuff, you know, it would be enough to, you know, to handle the traffic stuff. So that's my two cents worth.
May I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
Will any of you bother yourself enough to go look at these truck stops that these gentlemen own, inspect them, and actually look at them? And see what they're going to build here? It'd be a very good idea. They may have a wonderful format, but to do anything until you've looked at the product that they've already produced, just foolish. At least give us that chance. And Jay, I understand, Mr. Warren, that it's going to be income, it's going to be a sales tax for you. I've been promised for 55 years, give us this sales tax, we'll get to this goal, then it'll go away. It's just going to keep going up. You're trying to get another sales tax? That costs us all customers. We welcomed Walmart in, for Freeling called the merchants and said they were going to build a super center, but only one in Cali County. What was thinking about being in our Kansas City? I said, well, they're probably lying, but if there's only going to be one, it ought to be here because we'll get the sales tax off. Went, went in business five years, they built it, built another one. We have constantly made it difficult to do business in our Kansas City if you're not a big corporation or you're not someplace else. Our downtown looks really bad now. All the good initiatives have been forgotten. I'm staring straight at the building with hazard things out on the sidewalk because the windows are falling out of it and the front of the building's crushed. Nothing's being maintained and we're not seeing to it. Windows are out and the birds are flying in. We're just letting the friction of our city go by. I understand you need more money, but you can't sacrifice the investments of other people. Do something else to create that. Extend your, your boundaries north and give them another place to put it. But if you think they're not, this is not going to impact all those other field dealers, there's only so much fuel that's going to be bought here. And it is probably not going to be new truck traffic doing it for the reasons that Jim articulated that they have to buy their fuel. But I ask a question. Will any of you go look at the truck stops that they've built?
What came in Texas is? I will.
I think, I, I think that's just good business. If you're going to make the decision, is this going to be a pilot?
Conversation needs to be here, man.
Come on, yeah, go on. I can't hear.
Yeah.
And, and we need to address us, not other people.
This is all, yeah.
Okay. Spot.
Sir.
Not fine. Regarding that he's asking the truck stop, like we said, we are a small developer. That's why we are in this small town. The big developers, pilots and those, they don't come. They said, I mean, I mean, that's why they ask us to spend our money to test, you know? That's why they work with us, you know, but they don't come. They know the place, they already came, but they don't want to invest. That's same thing with loves, loves around your corner. They are, they are everywhere. Their team everywhere. They don't want to invest. Otherwise, they would have done before us already. They are in town. And we are just.
Loves and Casey's.
And regarding all the other things, we are giving the drive to the city, which will come to the commission, what can exactly.
Thank you. A little motion or something here.
Madam Mayor, could we ask that this thing, you walk us through again, the sequence of things based on the request of the proposed resolution before us tonight? Step one, step two, step three? That's.
As far as tonight, the action on the agenda tonight, that is, that would be a resolution that would transfer ownership of the property to Aliens Ventures, so let's see, to develop a travel center.
I think he's one of the dates that you've given us and what it comes from.
Okay. So, yeah, the original letter of intent was, was signed August 8th of 2019. Then there was an extension, June 5th of 2021. I did forget to mention in, when they were talking earlier, in that, in that 2020 timeframe and 21 timeframe, we were working on floodplain issues there and having, getting a letter of map amendment done so that that property could be developed. It's in the floodplain now, it's not developable without it. They, they spent a lot of their money working on that to, within, with the surveyors and engineers to develop a plan to bring that out of the floodplain. And that will require Phil to do that for the building. And so that's another cost that they, they were talking about that they've been working with. So that, that took some time to get the letter of map amendment for the floodplain. And then we also during that 2020 timeframe, and this was completed July of 21 was the traffic study for that area. Again, it didn't show increasing any traffic that wasn't already out there. And the only recommendations was that on Kansas, the, that there'd be a right turn lane into it to free up traffic there as traffic was turning in and out of the truck stop. We went through the rezoning process at the city level. So the Planning and Zoning Commission did approve recommendation to the city commission on July 13th to rezone it for commercial. And then on August 3rd, that came before the city commission and was approved to rezone to C3 to accommodate the truck stop. During that same timeframe, some concerns with that, with the historical piece of the property, Nets and Noah came up. And so there was a, a phase one and phase two of a cultural resource study that was down on the property where they went in and dug holes 15 feet apart. They were four foot deep in a grid pattern over the whole property to see if there was any detectable artifacts. They, that study determined that there really wasn't anything from the X and O period of significance. They did, of course, like anywhere else in the community, they did find different shards of stone and bones and things like that. But it was determined that, that the project could move forward with, there'd be monitoring on the property when they do grading work, per for. And then if nothing significant's found during that, then it should be cleared to go. And that was done and finished up in September 22. And then again, here recently, we received letters from them that the, that the loans were approved from the bank. So that kind of got things to the point where all the hurdles were crossed and they were ready to move forward, so.
Could I ask how many acres are we giving them?
It's on here. 13, here, 1371. I, Madam Mayor, apologize. I, I was, thought we were here in deliberation, and I wanted the narrative from the city manager, so for the sake of our discussion.
Give me what you want.
Yes, yes. I, I just was trying to, I didn't know if you're, if it was your intent now to go back to floor discussion or our deliberation.
I would like a motion.
I can't go in. Commissioner, you want to say something?
So, I'm a little concerned about the emissions that was brought up to here. To Mr. Langer, what type of study could be done on the middle school and the emissions in the area that citizens have brought up? I hadn't thought about it. So can you tell how long a, a study would be on that?
Commissioner, that data exists.
Okay.
It exists in the form of data that's retained by the Bureau of Air and Kansas Department of the Environment and also by Region 7 of EPA in Kansas City. It would not be a great stretch to take a look at the data that they already have on air quality and emission studies that have been done in other communities and to apply it to the size of the development that would be put in, the number of trucks that it could hold that it could pass. We'll at least have an idea of, of what would or could those health effects be. Again, this goes back to my original reason for being here this evening. I'm not here to say it's a good idea, it's a bad idea. I'm here to say there's a lot of this information you still don't have, and that's all. All, through all of this, through all of this time, and I realize that Commissioner Rogers is upset, but you know, had it not been, had it not been for a pandemic, you would have heard me talking about these types of issues a long time ago. But that's neither here nor there. Right now, we know that it's there. We know that, I'm, I'm all about economic development. I, I want to see it happen. And the constituents that you have here this evening, they have brought their concerns to you. Mine is just make sure you have all of the right, make sure you've got it, and, and we can help you get that. And that's it. I mean, my, my visitor, not to sabotage anything, it was to say, hey.
I wasn't upset. Let me clarify. I'm not upset that you came and brought these concerns. It was a lack of courtesy and respect to have given us the knowledge that this was something out to us before tonight. I think that's what upset me most is there is no communication from our city county health department to one of the city, one of the cities or city manager or any other city commissioners. I wasn't aware of this unless I missed it in a health email or something. I didn't know you did all this stuff. So it was kind of a, the lack of that, that's what upset me, not that you're here speaking.
And I, I understand.
And so I, I think, I think that functionally what we are, we, we're learning that Mr., the public health, county public health director, director, did I say it right?
Public health officer.
Public health officer is, is making us aware of tools that he has. And in both his addresses to the governing body, I've intuited that he's saying with those tools, it has nominal, his has, sounds like it has less impact on delaying any business decisions made for this than my orations on what we're talking about have about the length of this meeting. He, he can do what he can do quicker in, in context of time than I can say what I say up here. But, but, so, and I think what, I guess I walked away from that portion, the earlier portion of the meeting with the mindset that perhaps we're now aware that you do have that capacity to, to help us with, with the part of it that historically the nation is overlooked. We haven't really looked at environment, the environment, the environmental impact on health, community health, individual health. You've got tools now. And so, so, so maybe now the bigger piece of that is that dialogue, that becomes part of the dialogue and such discussions. But, so I, summarily, I think, I think he can do it and not really delay anything if, if there is a.
Yeah. I do, so I do have a question.
Okay.
On this. This, this wasn't even talked about anywhere during this process to the final stages. So, so in the meantime, these gentlemen invested money on the project throughout this time, not even being aware, none of us being aware that this would be brought up at the final stages. So this is something that we want to consider as projects before. If we want to all of a sudden start on this one at the final stages, I'm not saying it's not important, but I'm saying if, if for some reason, something like this would stop this project, I mean, I feel like the city's going to have to pay back all the money they've invested to this point on the property. Because that wasn't, that was not told to them that an environmental assessment may come at the very end and stop, and stop the project. So that's just my.
I don't think it's about stopping the project. I think it's about one more thing to look at, but he's saying he can do it at the same time.
But what, so what is it, what does the outcome provide though?
I don't know yet. I never even.
Well, I'm just saying, yeah, I'm just saying though, is, what is the outcome that he comes up with? Does it stop the project? Does it basically say, no, they can't do this? Is that what?
Oh, I guess, no, I get, are you trying, I don't know, are you trying to say that is this something that we're going to make policy for any development or any residential building and housing here now that we're going to have a health study? I, I don't, I don't know what, is that what you're getting at, is we're starting all projects or?
From, from anything new today forward? Or do we, do we go back to all the projects that have been in works for four or five years and all of a sudden add that to a layer to them? That's, that's my question.
I would like to address the issue regarding the environmental thing. Something the project at this stage is like a final stage that we got, okay, everything clear from, from, from the city and now we can go ahead. That's why we invested so much money on it before when they told us about the archeology issue and those things, it get told at this step, so we don't move anything, we don't get enough of the money. That, okay, until that clears, we don't go. Now, environmental thing, any project that go ahead with the bank, banks send their appraisal to, to the EPA, and that's must to do on any truck stop. Environmental will be done at that stage. And that stage, if something comes wrong, the city won't be held liable. It's beyond us. Because we already talked, we already look what we, what we have done. If something came and got forbidden under the earth, then doomed.
So you've already done an environmental study yet?
That will be done by the bank too.
Okay.
Later on. I mean, as part of the city, we know that there's no, I mean, gas or anything else. Anything happened except the archeology student, it is done now. So that is done. Plus the study that is done by the KDOT already saying there's no increased traffic, the trucks already passing by, things already passing by. Now, with the more revenue that the city will get later on, they can widen the street maybe later on, have more. With the truck stop, when other people, they will bring more development to the area. Remember that land piece is much bigger land. We only taking 12 acres out of which four acre are nonusable for us because of the layout. So, but the rest, but the other area, city can sell that land from zero value to a lot of value, and they can recover all their cost. Plus the employment will get, at least 20, 25 people will be working over here. Maybe they want to live over here in the new development that he is making, I mean, developing. City will earn a lot of tax, property tax, sales tax, diesel tax, you know, the, the fuel tax, you know? It's all additional revenue plus the sales, plus there'll be a restaurant, and all the, most of the truck drivers are passing through, but through the bypass, not even coming to the city.
But we have an ordinance that says they can't.
They can, yeah, they also, so that's helpful for city for the environmental issues too. So it's.
I mean, we have an ordinance that says they cannot come into town. They have to go unless they have specific city business here.
So, and that was the reason that the city asked us to build over there so they can avoid the hazards. And that's what we agree to it and to the risk. And regarding the new study that, I work with the different, I mean, cities too for different development too. But most of you tell that the, right at the final spot, okay, let's do it. They usually have a separate meeting and include that in their system. Okay, now going ahead or moving forward, these are the steps that everybody has to go through to get the project going. These are the steps that everybody has to go through to get the project going, or not approval. So that any developer comes, they know, okay, these are the things that has to be clear before they invest more money or even look at it. But right now, at this stage, it's just, just like Scott says, you know, all of a sudden, maybe doing why we. So, you know, it's, it's just, I don't think it's right at this stage of the project, so I, we look into investments and other things. Just want to make one thing, I know he added a lot of thing, but Randy, I emailed you, remember last week about that bank needing that thing? You know, that letter you say you have it with us on the 16th, on the, after 15th meeting?
Yeah, this is a.
Yeah, so, you know, if we didn't get that letter, you know, that loan going to go get away, you know, then bank, once they approve, they have to close in, in certain amount of time, and we need to provide those documents to them. And one of the documents is the land. You know, they're saying bank is the one who taking the risk to put their money in there, I'm putting some part of it, bank putting the risk. So they want to see that city is motivated, all that, you know, if we don't get the letter, and I never heard this about emission problem and all that, you know, we have a vapor recovery stage two on every big cities. With the pumps coming, they have a stage two vapor recovery. So what you, you are doing, they caught in there, the new tanks and the new pumps have the stage vapor two already built in. But this is, I'm really surprised, Randy, what to do. You know, we spent all this money, if we don't get this letter, this project not going to move forward. What I'm going to tell bank, I didn't have the letter. And they think it's a guaranteed letter because, you know, the city attorney signed it, everyone signed it. So that's the reason we moved forward, that's what I want to put this thing. Did we do the environmental study when the Starbucks is coming here or scooter is coming here? Did we, did, did this, no. When K C opened in the middle of the city, three of them, anybody did the environmental? Then I filled the gas this morning and they, they are leaking pump over there, nobody take care. Let's go there, they're going to wash that away in the stream. Thank you.
Thank you, I mean, we just found out Friday, this came up on the agenda. Okay, that's names of people and, and the resolution and everything. Yes, I had heard about a truck stop, but no specifics were ever given. No, it was, yes, I'm still in contact with them, yes, they're still working. So, I mean, we're not trying to do anything that makes it seem like, but it's brand new to me. I read over the packet as good as I could, I reached out to the city manager with a couple of questions that I had, but it's not, it's not something that we've had weeks or met you guys many times before and had meetings. So it's first and first for me.
But like I said, we were, we were working like for three years almost. It was, we were representatives, we all, we worked time, city managers, city managers, and that's how it started.
Yeah, well, that's why we're asking questions.
I do understand your concern. I oftentimes contrast local government grossly different and greatly more accountable than federal government or even state government, because we make a decision today and it can effectively essentially change lives in our community tomorrow. You know, I mean, it, that's how responsive local government is. But the other thing about local government is the change dynamic. I, I do, I can say that without the detail and without names, the dialogue about the truck stop in that area is four to five years old. At least across two city managers. And like I said, if we had Tip O'Neill here, that had been here for 47 years as a member of the city commission, then he'd just tell us, well, we've been talking about this for, you know, but, but these are fairly fresh faces. And so the detail is here, happening now, so we just have to, to, we have to, we have to address what's in front of us right now with my three Cs with conscience, conviction, and constituents.
Madam Mayor, may I ask a question? Did any of you know last week this was going to be an action on this commission meeting? Did any of you commissioners know even two weeks ago that these men were expecting a letter to transfer that land to them tonight?
I didn't.
Did you know, Jay?
Yeah.
Did you know?
Tonight?
That you were going to be transferring the land to them tonight?
Two weeks ago?
Did I know it two weeks ago? I didn't, I didn't know two hours ago that I was supposed to pick up my granddaughter.
Okay, I don't think you did, did you know, Madam Mayor?
No, I did not.
Did you know Scotty?
I did not know it was coming, I knew it soon, but I didn't know specifically tonight would be a night.
Oh, Jay's the only one that knew.
This is in retail what we call a closing question. You create urgency for action based upon what you perceive and what people think. Obviously, two city managers in a row have been negotiating with these men. But it's free enterprise, Randy, nobody that is in business deserves the city to bail them out of something. It doesn't sound like to me that any of the commissioners on any of the private commissions authorized that this was going to happen.
They, they've approved zoning changes, that, that, this has gone through a process with the city commission. There's been, yes, yes. It's been very plain and clear the whole time, it's been a truck stop. So this isn't a big gotcha thing. We, for a truck, we know that a letter was going to be signed specifically on August 15th. I think it says 15th, yes, yes, 15th. No, but the archaeological dig, why were we doing archaeological dig for a truck stop? Why were we doing a planning commission change for a truck stop? I mean, I think that's what Mr. Commissioner Jennings had said the whole time was, yes, we didn't know the name or the gas station company and all that, but we knew the gas station, truck stop, travel stop, whatever you want to call, had been in the works and that was a name reference over the last four or five years, yes. No, I did not know that August 15th, at eight o'clock time, someone would get signed or something like that, so.
I'm just, I'm just surprised. I didn't know anything about it until newspaper articles and talk around town in the last four or five days.
Have we been working on four or five years?
Okay, but this date has been constant? Has that date always been the date?
What date's that?
To transfer the land?
No, they got the, they got the approval from the bank and the, and so we needed to move forward with this for that next step. That just came up.
Let's, let's cut discussion off, we've done about as much as we can discuss on this. I have something to say, I was not on the commission, and even when I wasn't on the commission, I voiced my opinion that I was not in favor of this. So it's kind of one of those things, we all have to vote our conscience and our beliefs. So if someone would put a motion up?
Well, you know, they've spent a lot of money and they need to know whether we're going to do it or not. I mean, you know, we can't postpone it any farther because it depends on this land, depends on their, depends on their loan. And so if they don't get the property deal over to them, then that loan's going to go away, and so therefore they're going to be out, you know, several hundred thousand dollars. I make a motion, the resolution authorizing the transfer of certain real estate being a tract of land situated in the north east quarter of section 19, township 34, south range 4 east of the six principal Merlin, Cali County, Kansas to Kaylands Venture LLC.
Your second.
Let's just get this vote over with, I'll second and see where the chips fall. Let's get a vote one way or the other, we'll find out.
It's been moved and seconded. May we accept, pass on the deed to this land? Is any further discussion?
I just think.
I have one question.
No, sir, no, sir, we're in the middle.
I just feel like we're, we're in a position where we have to do it today, we just got it Friday. Go ahead.
Proceed to vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, nay.
Nay.
Question carry. Yes, sir.
How long before the property can be reverted back to the?
It's two years.
Two years. Item number four, please.
Item number four is consider the first reading of an ordinance adopting the budgeted plan to become effective August 26, 2023.
It's Marla.
Hi, I'm here, Commissioner, Chief Burr is probably going to be the majority of the talking here. Know how we work so hard, do come to you frequently on updating our pay ordinance, want to make sure that all positions are listed appropriately. And, and so our, our goal here today is to add part-time police officer position. Chief Burr will talk about how this is not going to improve positions per se full-time. And then we also want to take burn pit attendant off because that is a position that is, has not been compensated through the city for years. It's been through the Arnold Group. So it's, it's not a position that we have filled with a full-time, almost.
So how will we maintain that though?
The burn pit, we are working, Tony's guys, that works with Brian, they work with us for the Arnold Group, and we find someone to fit the role, and they usually stay in it quite a while. And there seems to be no concerns, it's not, it's not a full-time position that would require benefits or anything like that. So it's, it's, it seemed to work.
But even though we're doing it through the Arnold Group, it still comes out of the city money, right?
Correct, yes. But they are not city employees, they're Arnold Group employees.
Let Chief Burr tell you about his plans.
Thank you very much. Good evening, I will try to be brief because, anyway. So what I'm proposing is, we are currently authorized for 28 sworn police officers. We struggle to be able to reach that number. If you remember back in 2021, we were about seven police officers short. We are currently staffed to 25, so we, we still have three vacancies to reach that 28th full-time sworn position. What I'm proposing is to take that 28th position and break it into three part-time police officer positions. So what that entails is that each one of those positions would only be paid for 1,000 hours in, in a year, in a calendar year. They would not be afforded any benefits, so no health insurance, no retirement benefits, none of that. We will stipulate that for all three of those positions that they all be certified full-time police officers. So when we talk about, we're actually going to target maybe retired police officers who are still maintaining their certification or currently working full-time police officers from other agencies, maybe within Cali County, to come in and fill those roles. My plan for those three part-time positions is to help us with special events, because, you know, obviously we have Arcoala coming up. We could just use the extra help in those situations, plus any community events that we do, like National Night Out, Dare Camp, and those kind of things. The other concern that we have is mental health transport. That has been a struggle for us, being staffed the way we are, with, especially with the number of people that we have currently in training. So even though we're staffed at 25 full-time police officers, we do have a number that are still in training, so they are not available to us to be able to use them to do those mental health transports. So that's why I look at using one of our full-time positions and converting those into three part-time. And there would not be an economic impact in doing that. In fact, it would probably save a little bit of money, because a full-time position is somewhere in the range of 85 or 86 with benefits.
With benefits, and these will not have benefits.
And these would be, we would pay these individuals $25 an hour with no benefits, so you're looking at about $75,000 for group positions.
I think it's extremely well thought out, I think it will help us a lot, and, and it actually decreases the cost. And there are some officers that, in the county that are interested in options.
Thank you, I, I mean, I trust Chief Burr, and I think, you know, there are probably some individuals out there that want to still serve and give to their community, but don't want that full-time stress, or they have other family situation, well, if part-time, they give them what they can do and still be beneficial, so, yeah. I mean, I guess I would like to make a motion that we approve an ordinance fixing the compensation of employees of the city of Arkansas, the Kansas pursuant to the provision of KSA 14-1501 and repealing ordinance number 2023-04-4578.
No further discussion.
Commissioner Ganger?
Yes.
Commissioner Jennings?
Yes.
Commissioner Rogers?
Yes.
Commissioner Warren?
Yes.
Yes. Commissioners have anything to discuss? I hope not. Do you have any further comments from the audience?
Items, I don't need a change. Three pictures I would like for you to look at.
I mean, put my finger down, I'm sorry. You still mow this, don't you? You mow this, the property you mow.
Sorry, I'll mow that. First picture you're looking at would be Pine Street if it went past the alley. The second picture you'd be looking at is the drainage ditch a half a block north of Pine Street. It's a paved drainage ditch, it goes back. And the third picture you're looking at would be the drainage ditch that the city and the Santa Fe Railroad argue over who has to mow it. As you can see, there's trees starting. Three weeks ago, my neighbor called the city to get it mowed, and it still hasn't mowed. The last heavy rain we had, people were using the dip on D Street because it was backed full of water. I don't know what it's going to take to get it mowed, but I would like the city to instruct that it be mowed. And I went through this same thing last year.
No, so I didn't mean you mowed those spots, I know you mowed that area, and you brought this before, maybe it was last year or a couple of years, I know you brought this up before.
And I don't know why the city won't keep it up.
Do you need to talk to Tony?
And then the second thing I'd like to bring up really quick, reading the paper and hearing street talk, I would like for the commission to appoint a special investment committee to invest the city funds. I don't have any faith in the city manager, nor the treasurer, from what I read in the newspaper and from what I hear on the street about investing the money and how to use the banks. I think it came up that need to, and it used to be that every three years we put out bids so the banks could bid on it, how they wanted to do it, I don't know whether that's done yet.
What we want to explain is, nobody was anticipating the change in interest rates. And we had just done the bids just before this all started to happen. I don't think we need to be blaming our treasurer for this, I, also banking terminology changes. You know, we just don't, sometimes we don't keep up as well as we should have.
Where I'm coming from is I spent 12 years in the finance business, I spent 16 years in the banking business, and I spent six years as a criminal investigator for FDIC. So that's where I'm coming from in looking at the treasurer and the city manager, they don't know investments.
They don't invest, how would the banks, and the banks invested? You know, they, they don't put it, they don't put it in funds or anything, that this, the, the financial institute that gets a bid puts it in those funds. That we don't have our, we would never have any city manager, any city employee say, put this in Amazon, we would. So.
It's not.
Well, that's, but, that, yes, go ahead, go ahead.
That's not, statutory, we can only do certain things with, with tax dollars, and so that's.
That's not statutory, we can only do certain things with, with tax dollars and so that's not true that we can do anything we want with it.
I don't know about the city ordinance, but I'm talking
I'm talking about state, state law, state law.
Yeah, it's, uh, it goes into CDs, they don't invest it in the market and risk it because it's very minimal, as Larry's nodding, Randy's nodding.
We have, yeah.
If you had an investment committee could go through all of this, could see what the ordinances are and give you as a commission guidance, so.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
You want your pictures?
Yes, Mr. Matthew, you want your photos?
No, you can keep them.
Okay, thank you.
Maybe you'll get, maybe that way we get them mowed. I wouldn't make one other statement, I will keep it mowed for $200 every time I mow it. I can't go away now, I'm horrible.
Thank you.
That would be about $200 every two years.
Jim Silver, 1816 East Justin, listening to tonight, no different than a lot of nights I've come up in the commission meeting. One of our biggest problems, and it's probably due to the fact that we get a newspaper three times a week instead of five or six. None of this information tonight has been disseminated to the public in a timely fashion. And that's not the manager's fault, that's not the minister's fault. Nobody is hearing this stuff until it's tonight, we gotta do it tonight, whatever happens. You're going into an executive session with it. None of the public know what that all about. I don't know if that's a top secret or if it's just something we don't want known, but it's not out. And it's not right. It's not fair to the taxpayers to be surprised Saturday morning with what happened here. And it's going to happen. I think the housing thing is a great thing for our city, and I already said that. Truck stop, it's their money, it's some out-of-town bank investing in it. Who knows what will happen, but it's going to damage five families. They're saying, not me. I stood up here voicing my concern for those five families that I know well and I do business with, and I'll continue to do business with. But the bigger implication is, most of the taxpayer community won't know about this until three or four, five days from now. And even a year from now that we, why in the hell did we give them that grant? And then why in the hell do we buy smother ground that's not been appraised right? For twice what it's worth with taxpayer money. Same night, we're going to give away 20 acres. We need some more advanced notice to the public. And I'm just one of the ones that's voiced an opinion.
Randy?
Okay, I will point out that the financial summary is in the packet, so at your leisure, take a look at that. We, uh, at the work, next work session, we should have the storm water rate, um, uh, analysis finished up for you guys to look at and discuss and, uh, also at the next work session, Commissioner James has brought Farrell Katz and, uh, Katie up in Animal Control and Mike Bellis, Neighborhood Services are, are reaching out to other cities and kind of finding out what they do and we'll have some information on that. Um, and then also I think we'll have some information on farm animals within the city limits as well for you guys to talk about.
Those are action, not
Oh, okay. Okay. In September, beginning of October, yeah, sometimes in September, yeah. But the storm, the storm, stormwater rates will be discussed. We are working on the community rating system for flood plane. It, it should give our, so as we work through it, it'll provide, um, discount rates for flood insurance based on how well we do on the, uh, on the ISO rating. So, um, we have a visit from, uh, the state's, uh, uh, flood plane people and then also the ISO folks on August 29th. They'll, they'll tour the city and look at our records and how we do things with flood plane management and, uh, and that'll kind of get that process going and, and at some point in the near future, we'll have a rating based on that. And then it'll provide discounts from five up to 10% on, uh, for, for those folks that need to buy flood insurance, it'll help with that. Um, we've got our health insurance renewal and it's going to be down depending on the deductible rate, anywhere from 3.2 to 3.4. Ain't Martha left already, she was pretty excited about that too. So we're actually seeing a decrease in health insurance in the, in the next year. Still working on dialing in the UV at the wastewater treatment plant, um, but that's, uh, it's installed and, and it is working. It's just they're having some troubles with some sensors showing that there's no light, some of the lights are out, but they are still working and they're kind of dialing through some of that. And again, the final step out there is the, uh, is the flare system which captures the gas and burns it off. And, um, so that's, that's, uh, being finished up. And I think we talked about doing them, hopefully doing a schedule in September for, uh, tour for you guys in September to see all the work that was done out there. And, uh, Rod, Tommy and I met with Sean, uh, McGrew at Struthersfield about possibly taking their wastewater out here. Um, in the next few years, they're going to be realigning, um, 77 hour around Struthersfield and that's going to create some issues with, uh, dissection of station and the, and the wastewater treatment plant that they have. And so, um, it makes sense to look at, and their, their wastewater treatment plant can't keep up or can't treat the, um, the wastewater out there like it needs to be, mainly because it's actually too clean a water and doesn't have the bugs and any needs. So, but what we would do if, um, is moving the effluent out of Struthersfield into our system over by Patterson Park. So, uh, that's something we're looking at, all the tests that we did, um, on the effluent, um, water that they have, didn't have any concerns or, uh, for us at this point, there was no heavy metals or anything that may affect our current, um, treatment. And then the employee picnic, just remind you guys, it's on August 18th from Friday.
Uh, Friday, I, Friday, Friday.
It's 16.
Eighteen, eighteen.
Eighteen.
Port Murray is not, uh, where's it at, Wilson, where's it at?
Where at? Uh, at, uh, Wilson, that's what I thought.
Madam Mayor, can I make a suggestion?
Yes, sir.
I was wondering if we could table that executive session for the next meeting, I'm, my mind is too rough, I mean exhausted. I don't know if I can handle that 30, 40 minutes.
30, 40 minutes? Can we do a
Motion, I'll second it. It's, I mean, if that's okay with
Well, it's, it's your meeting, so it's what
That a motion?
Yeah, I'll make that motion, I just, you know, I've been here a long, long time, I'm just
I'll second it.
It's been moving the second that we have on the executive session.
Till our next meeting.
For our next meeting, any further discussion? Proceed to vote, all in favor say aye. Unless I'm on the agenda there.
Move to adjourn.
Move to adjourn. All in favor say aye.
Aye. Did we?
Aye.